Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to open the Charlton Board of Selectment meeting, March fifteenth, 2023, six thirty P. M. Date changed due to weather. I'd like to thank you all for your patience in what happened over the last twenty-four hours weather-wise. If we could all rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we have a little bit of a busy evening, not crazy busy, but there's a lot of things we're going to cover. I think some might last a little longer than others, but so for the minutes of the regular meeting, we need approval of February twenty-eighth.
Move to approve as amended.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? None opposed. Community relations announcements and open forum.
If you haven't obtained your two thousand twenty-three dog license, you have until March nineteenth to pay without an added ten dollars late fee per dog. Nomination papers are due back to the town clerk's office no later than March seventeenth at five P. M. Town election is Saturday, May sixth, and annual town meeting is Monday, May fifteenth. Real estate community forum is at the Overlook in Gray Room. That's Friday, March twenty-fourth, and that's from eight-thirty to ten. Residential and commercial realtors are invited to meet with town representatives to discuss the development vision of Charlton. Household hazardous waste and electronics collection day will be Saturday, March twenty-fifth, and that's from nine to one. And that's at the Casella Waste Service Facility at one sixty-five Berford Road in Southbridge, Mass. Free vouchers are viable at Board of Health in a town hall. Celebrate quilting, quilt show, and demonstration. That's on Saturday, March eighteen, from ten to two, Dexter Hall in the library. No registration is required.
Excellent. And is there anyone available for open forum or I'm hearing none and assuming none? We will move on to appointments and resignations, which that looks like it's a pretty good-sized list.
All right. The first appointment is for the cultural council. Attached is a talent bank form from Kathleen Hilka seeking to be appointed to the cultural council. The members of the cultural council have approved the request. I'd recommend the board appoint Ms. Hilka with a term expiration date of June thirtieth, 2026.
So moved and thank you, Ms. Hilka.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Hearing none opposed, unanimous.
Next is congratulations. Next is appointment for election workers. Attached is a request from the town clerk's office to appoint the following election workers until December thirty-first, 2023. Greg Brunel, Nancy Mills Chalk, Lou Ellen Corkum, Jerry Dobell, Laura Ferguson, Sue Gelb, Bill Guy, Joe Haybler, Joan Hool, Joseph Francis Mahaney, Judy Maskel, Margaret O'Connor, Sylvia Stepian, Louis Shigru, and William Shigru. I'd recommend the board make the appointments.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Hearing none, unanimous. Congratulations again.
Next is appointment for register of voters. Per MGL Chapter fifty-one, voters, when a registrar of voters' term is about to expire, we must appoint the chairman of either Democratic Town Committee or Republic Town Committee of this and ask them for a list of a recommendation of appointment for someone to fill the next term. The appointments are made by the Board of Selectment. We contacted the Democratic Town Committee Chairman, Henry Wyland, and their recommendation is for the board to reappoint Lisa Redmond as registrar of voters, a Democrat, until April first, 2026. I'd recommend the board make the appointment.
So moved and thank you, Lisa.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
All right. Next is an appointment for the per- for a per diem dispatcher. The board is being asked to appoint Robert Campbell as a per diem dispatcher for the Charlton Police Department. I'd recommend the board make the appointment.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Hearing none, unanimous.
Next is traffic constables. The board is being asked to appoint the following as traffic constables pending obtaining medical appearance, appropriate training, and background checks. Kevin Arena, Tracy Richardson, Dennis LeBeuf, Robert Campbell, Paul Legrander, Jacob Maldonado, Brian Garnie, Daniel Crowley, and Jeff Mora. I recommend the board make the appointments as requested.
So moved.
Second.
For discussion, so this is these, the traffic constables are only available to work in Charlton, not in Oxford.
They are appointed by the essentially if a neighboring town requests assistance outside of whatever their internal, it could be expanded and fulfilled by qualified traffic constables in neighboring town.
So a lot of same thing for people that might not know in people at home, this, a lot of this has to do with the Route Twenty project and being able to fill all those vacancies that we have.
Correct. That is a concern of having enough bodies to maintain traffic control during that project and other regular town projects over the next few years.
Okay. We have a motion and a discussion and take it to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. None opposed, very good.
Next is a letter of resignation from the Assistant Treasurer Collector. Attached is a letter from Mary Markowski, Assistant Treasurer Collector, resigning her position with the town effective March sixteenth, 2023. She's been offered the position of Treasurer Collector in the town of Hubbardston. It's been a pleasure working with Mary, and I wish her very best in this new position. The board should accept her resignation and a letter thanking her for her efforts is in your sign folder.
It's always nice to see people get bump ups, so a motion to accept with regret and good luck, Mary.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Mary, best of luck to you and your new endeavors.
All right. The next resignation is for one of our reserve police officers. Attached is a notice from Jordan Ryan, resigning as a Charlton Police Reserve or Charlton Reserve Police Officer effective February twenty-third, 2023, due to his new place of employment not allowing him to work for multiple police agencies. I would recommend the board accept his resignation and a letter thanking him for his services in your sign folder.
Motion to accept and good luck, Jordan.
Yeah, but and for discussion though are, so his new employment doesn't allow him to work for multiple agencies. We don't have that same policy, I understand.
I don't believe we do, no.
It's just Auburn is just, it's us or nothing.
Yeah.
Again, for our, for our, for our.
Yeah, it's in one of their bottles.
Understanding, yeah. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the final resignation notices from a member of the zoning board of appeals alternate position. Attached is a notice from Ryan Avery, resigning from the zoning board of appeals as an alternate due to moving out of town. I would recommend the board accept his resignation and a letter thanking him for his services in your sign folder.
So moved and good luck, Ryan.
Second.
Yeah. Always sad to see. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Hearing no opposed, unanimous. So we have a six forty, we're almost, we're right on time for the cultural council.
All right. Give me one second. I'll promote Christine Grundowski to present on their behalf.
Hey, Christine.
Good evening. Hi. Can everyone hear me all right?
Yeah, perfectly.
Gotcha.
Okay. Thank you so much for allowing me some of your time this evening. I am coming to the board with some very exciting news. The cultural council has engaged in a partnership with the Charlton Public Library this year, and we will be running our art show in conjunction with the library during the month of May. So this is a change. Typically, the cultural council runs the art show during the Old Home Day celebration, and both the library and the cultural council have been fortunate enough to pursue additional grants from the state that are allowing us to hopefully do something a little bit bigger and a little bit with a little bit more of an immersive twist for this year's activities. So I wanted to share all with you that that is a departure from our historical participation in Old Home Day, but we will run the exhibit from May eighth through May nineteenth. There will be art present on each of the floors in the library. Drop-off is going to be on Saturday, May sixth, during open hours in Dexter Hall. The artwork pickup will be on Saturday, May twentieth, once the exhibit is taken down. We are going to have a reception on May eleventh from six to seven o'clock, held in Dexter Hall, and we are just very excited to, for this joint venture for this year, and we just wanted to share that announcement with the Board of Selectment and with the public as we've started to make some social posts, and we'll be commencing with our, with our announcements in the local newspapers as well. So there'll be a PR piece that'll go out, and later this week, we will commence with inviting past participants to be a part of this year's show. So I'll, I'll stop there and entertain any questions that the board might have.
Steve Thury?
Absolutely.
Hey, Christine, thanks to you and the council for this. I think actually combining and partnering with the library is a really good idea. All I'd say is let us know how we can help, whether it be sharing out to the town website, our Facebook page, you know, personal selectmen's Facebook pages, et cetera. So you might want to just remind everyone just one more time, who may not have caught it at the beginning, what those dates were again?
Oh, sure, and would welcome any public boost that we can get, and really appreciate that support, Phil. So the exhibit will run from May eighth through May nineteenth, and all of the art pieces will remain on display during the normal business hours for the library. On May eleventh from six to seven, we will have an opening reception where actually it would be very nice if a few of you all could come and maybe say a few words. You will be officially invited with our email campaigns coming up here this week. So that would be wonderful. But the artwork drop-off is on Saturday, May sixth, and the pickup will be on Saturday, May twentieth. We're looking to have some background music and some light refreshments at the reception. The, either the friends of the library or other representation from the library will also make some opening remarks, as will Karen and myself. So we couldn't be more excited. The library staff have been very helpful, and they're very much looking forward to this collaboration with us, so we feel the same.
Excellent. And I think if you send us all an email, that that's the easiest way to put it under our calendars, and we'd be happy to, few of us, few of us at least be able to show up. And thank you.
We'll do. Thank you so much.
Oh, Steve, not, thank you, Ms. Chairman, I think there might be a question from the audience. Christine.
I'm still here.
Sorry. Yeah, we get some from the audience coming up.
We almost, we almost sort of, can we turn that TV sideways a little bit maybe?
I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Through the chair, the reason I'm asking, because last year, the cultural council, and well, for several years have applied for grants for entertainment for Old Home Day, and I just didn't know if they did that. Last year, they sponsored the, and before, the Bad News Jazz and Blues Band. And so I'm the entertainment chairman for Charlton Old Home Day, so I'm just curious if that was, if that was happening. If not, then those monies, if we need to hire that band again, would come from the funds for Old Home Day and not from the cultural council. So it was just a question about that.
Yeah. No, that's a great question. So we actually did have one applicant that was looking to perform at Old Home Day for this year. I would have to get back to you with the name to purview, but it was, it was not the Bad News Jazz Band. It was a different band that had applied that we were able to partially fund this year.
Okay.
And that was communicated in an email to Kathleen a couple of months ago, so we'll make sure that that gets routed to you.
Okay.
The details.
Well, you know, get inundated with a lot of emails and stuff like that, but.
Sure, yeah.
So, but the idea there's, like you know, there's only so many slots, you know, for entertainment on Old Home Day, so we just need to coordinate that. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, no, and we, we can put that back up to the top of your box with some additional details, but there was a band that applied. It was a new band for this year. They were looking to perform at Old Home Day, hold day, excuse me, Old Home Day, and we did attempt to make that connection, but we can reroute it again.
Yeah. Any information on how much the total cost and how much you would be funding would be, would be very good for that information based upon our budget.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
Thanks, Christine.
You're welcome.
And just for clarification, so Christine, you guys are still participating in Old Home Day, it's just a.
No, no.
Not at all?
Actually, no, we won't be. This is a change. So we'll, we'll, this will be the only art show that we will do this year. We won't be running the art show at Old Home Day. We can only manage one art, art show within the calendar year. So this is, this is a departure and an experiment, and we're excited to see where it goes.
Okay. I thought I understood it, but I just wanted to make it clear.
Thanks, Christine.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you all so very much. Appreciate it.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, right on time for the record, I just want to throw it out there.
Yeah, I'm a clock watcher. So now we're at the Old Home Day Committee, six forty-five P. M., almost on the spot.
Hey, Kathleen.
Hi, Kathleen, yeah. Kathleen Walker, Chairperson of the Old Home Day Committee. Before I start, I just wanted to say to Christine that we are going to miss you at Old Home Day, but it sounds like a wonderful adventure to combine with the library and do it over there, and I'm sure they'll get, you'll have a great response. I want to thank the Board of Selectment for having us here tonight and explaining a little bit about the change in dates for Old Home Day. Last year, as you know, we got rained out around noon time, and this was pretty devastating for some of the eighty or ninety vendors that we had, particularly because they had set up in the morning and they had to break down. A lot of the vendors depend on Old Home Day to make money for their, their events for the whole year, so it was very hard on them. It was also hard on the entertainers, and it was particularly hard on the committee because we were very distressed about that. This board was, was very gracious in allowing us to do the award ceremony here, so that, that didn't get left behind last year, and that's a really important part of Old Home Day. So I wanted to tell you that we discussed doing a rain date in September of last year, and we said we'd discuss it more in January. In January, we had a quite a lengthy discussion with all kinds of different ideas being put forth for what to do, whether we should even have a rain date, or when it should be or how it should be. And then we left it in January because so everybody could have a chance to think about it and see if, what made sense to them. And then in February, we had a vote, and we all voted unanimously to make the change to Sunday with a rain date for Monday. I would like to tell you a little bit about the four areas that we're concerned with and we were still concerned with. Basically, the effect on the churches, the road race, the alumni dinner, and tradition. And to, to start off, I'd like to bring up Pastor Craig Bellisario to talk about the interaction with the churches.
Sure. Thank you, Kathleen.
Thank you, Pastor.
Hi, everybody.
How's it going?
Good. Thanks for having us. Appreciate the time here. I'm also a pastor of Living Rich, Richard Charlton, which is right at the Grange here, but I'm also a part of, a member of the Old Home Day Committee for the past three years. And I'll, I'll reiterate Kathleen's disappointment. We were all, of course, very sad that the day was canceled. The rain was just too much, and it just wasn't feasible to continue on that day. A lot of work goes into that from the committee, from the vendors, entertainment, everybody, so it was obviously very devastating. But we are, we did talk about having a, a rain date in case of something like this happening again, because we felt the highest standard was, the most important thing was to actually have the event, whatever that cost might be. And anytime there's a change, it can be a little difficult. There's always pluses and minuses. But we did take into consideration who that would might affect to, moving from Monday to a Sunday. So I reached out to all the clergy in Charlton to connect with them and see what they had to say, knowing full well that Sunday is a big day for a lot of the churches. Like I said, I'm a pastor of Living Rich Charlton. Obviously, I'm okay with it. We went that direction. We're okay. I reached out to Dr. Jerome Lucy of the Charlton Methodist Church. He was completely fine moving it from Monday to a Sunday if it meant having the event and not having to postpone it again for next year. I've reached out to Father Bob of St. Joseph's, and while he did say I preferred on a Monday, he goes, I'm fine either way. If it's on a Sunday, that's fine. Wanted to do well for the town and wanted to do well for everybody. They've been very flexible. That's all great. I talked with Pastor Trevor of Charlton Baptist, and he said he would go to the board and check with them if they had any questions. They did not, and that he even said, thank you for letting us know and considering us when making this decision. The one church I was unfortunately not able to get in touch with was the Federated Church right here, which of course would be directly impacted as well too, as they're very close to where we, we get here. Reached out by email, I reached out by phone on multiple occasions, but through that email and phone, I did say if there, if there was some concerns or questions, to please reach out to me. So it's possible that he got that information and there are no concerns. I will continue to follow up with him, but I'm feeling pretty confident, should there be a problem, we can work around that and make sure that they're not impacted on their Sunday. Their parishioners can get to their church. They can use that parking space. We'll work with them whenever we can to help them in that area. But as a member of the clergy in Charlton and speaking to all of them, there doesn't seem to be any concerns about moving it from a Monday to a Sunday.
Great.
Thanks, Pastor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, I'd like to bring up Danielle LeBeuf, Danielle, to talk about the road race. Thank you for coming. I know she canceled everything to be here tonight.
Thank you for having me. I have two different parts to report on. We have both the children's fun run, which happened on Old Home Day, as well as the adult race. And the children's fun run is sponsored by the Charlton PTO, and last year, this was a major fundraising event for them. It was particularly hard with the rain with the little kids. There was a lot of families that were upset with how the event, we held it rain or shine, but it was a challenging event with the little kids. So looking forward, we want to have a chance to do the race again for the small children, and we want to do it on the same day as when everyone's on the common with the vendors on for Old Home Days. That was important to us, to have a chance to do it again this year. In speaking to the race director for the adult race, they seem to want to do it the same day that we're doing the events on the common. The woman who we spoke to, June Ellen Cludier, is, was concerned about Team Hoyt because with the wheelchair accessibility, wanted to make sure that we still were going to have the police to block off the street. So coinciding our efforts with them makes sense just for the safety of their runners as well. She was looking into, last time I heard, if the timing company, the RaceWire people were able to do the event on a Sunday, and then she was going to confirm with us. So I'm still waiting for confirmation if they were going to be available, but she was very interested in coinciding the adult race with the Old Home Day date and with the children's run, just for the bringing the people into the same space on the same time.
Cool.
Great. Thank you.
Thanks, Danielle. And thank your son for like coming in with you.
Jerry Dobell is, is here to talk about the annual alumni dinner.
I'm Jerry Dobell, one seventy-six for Anson, and I'm the Vice Chairman of Old Home Day. On this particular one, I'm going to have to read this, so alumni dinner and reunion, eleven, one o'clock P. M. to three o'clock P. M. Opportunity to have the dinner Saturday and Sunday or Monday. The senior center will be available all three days. If, if the same as Old Home Day, it may be a chance to visit with the different people and see the events and everything else. The parade will start off at three thirty, so there'll be time for one to the other, and there will be golf carts available for anyone that needs to get from one place to the other, if they're handicapped or have some problems. There will be golf carts available to them, so that's what I can do for you.
Okay. Thanks, Jerry. Thanks so much. And to talk about the last year here is Mike Lally, about tradition, and the reason Mike's talking about his tradition is because he's the oldest one here.
No love, Kathleen, no love.
All right.
Good evening. Now that we've been allocated to the category of the ages, I'd expect a little more deference from all of you.
I'll kiss your ring later, Mike.
It's, it would be remiss of me not to wish you all a happy St. Patrick's Day, seeing that we're this close, but we have this issue about the rain days. Well, coming from Ireland, rain never bothered me, but it placed hell with the Old Home Day planning. A lot of work goes into this Old Home Day planning. I've been fortunate enough to be a member of so many fine volunteers all too many years now, too many years, but it's, it's a time where many of us or some of us will have to get over, out of our comfort zones, because we can't please everybody. We do try, and the morale and the ingenuity and the cohesiveness that's in this outfit is unparalleled. From all my years of experience, and now that I'm, now that I'm older, I have to pull on that. I would think what plans we have made, it was done under a lot of discussion, a lot of consideration for all of the parties concerned, and I would very much like your buy-in to go with the program that we've put in place. And like I said, if it next, Home Day would be another rain day, it wouldn't be good because we should have, we have a choice. It's, it's the whole Old Home Day weekend that we're dealing with, not one specific day. And I think to be able to juggle, they're given activities within that weekend, they're still staying within tradition or near as damn it. So anyway, that's my spiel. Thank you.
And happy St. Patrick's.
No, and, and, and I think that's all good, and.
And I just want to, just in case Jim or anybody else wanted to speak or you had anything to what has already been said.
We'll, we'll probably be able to open this up for discussion after, but it's fine. Jim, go right ahead.
Through the chair. So a lot, a lot goes into, I mean, you're very much aware how much coordination and, you know, getting people all lined up and, but what I saw last year was a lot of civic organizations that depend upon Old Home Day for their, to make their money, and that was taken away from them, not by us, but unfortunately by the rain. I've been on the committee long enough to have encountered other days that were raining. I remember one in particular, it was a lightning storm, and we got partway through it. But by having the, the Sunday and having Monday as the rain day, that, that works, that works well. I know there are impediments as far as, you know, working around traffic for the churches and other things that are going on, but I guess what the committee really wants to maintain is to have Old Home Day happen and the residents and people from the area come in and enjoy the day. The big thing about Charlton Old Home Day, it's free. The only thing that you, you know, if you buy something here or whatever, you don't pay for parking. It's a great day, a lot of fellowship. So moving it back to Sunday, we're hoping to preserve the spirit of everything. I know it's not on Labor Day, but I think we have had in the past two. I know it's not on Labor Day, but I think we have had in the past, too, where we have done things on Sunday. One year, we had a concert up at Bay Path on a Sunday, even though we had the fireworks with a concert as well. So all those things. And like with the fireworks, yes, the, the rain date, you know, because it's on a Saturday, the rain date is Sunday. Could we have a marathon day? Yes, we could. Hopefully, that doesn't happen. But the idea, at least it gives us some room to be able to have this event, have the organizations and the vendors that have participated historically and the townspeople not, not to suffer not to have it because of inclement weather. So I'm hoping that the board supports the decision to move that way. If not, then we've got a lot of scrambling to do.
Out of the, out of the vendors that you've spoken to, or that the group's spoken to, how many are fine with Sunday and how many are also fine with the rain date?
We did send Craig to address that. Craig is in charge of our vendors and Danielle.
I'm just trying to get a barometer on that.
Yeah, we sent out a communication about this and our reasoning for it, and I have not received one, one email that this is a problem for our vendors, you know.
Either day.
For either day. So right now, they're planning on coming on Sunday, and then there's a rain date coming on Monday. Now, whenever that happens, even on, on the best of days, not all the vendors show up, but so far, there's been no pushback.
They seem grateful, though, for the option for the second date. They're grateful that we're giving them an option this year for that.
Yeah, there was a couple that mentioned that as well, too, yes.
But as far as, but as far as changing the date, that's really, that almost has no merit. They'll come either day, so.
No, but as far as having events.
Yeah, they're fine on the Sunday or Monday. The thing is about the whole weekend, most people have that entire weekend free to do it, especially with this much time to plan ahead.
Most people do, but, but I've even heard, I've been to a few of your meetings, but there's two other much larger events that go on that weekend, Woodstock and Spencer Fair. And people typically gravitate to Old Home Day on Monday. It's, you know, and that's the traditional part of it. If, maybe they'll gravitate, maybe we'll pull away. I just, my fear is two things. You might not have the volunteer people you need to span three days, and you, and you, some of those people might want to go to Spencer Fair on Sunday. There's a lot of moving parts.
The volunteer people, Steve, what?
What's that?
What volunteer people are you talking about? The committee?
I'm sorry, what?
I'm sorry, you said you were concerned that the volunteer people might not be available.
You, well, people, when people volunteer for things, all they, it's, if they know it's only going to be Monday or the fireworks, they do either or. But I don't know if you have enough people in your, if your group is, maybe it is. Is it vast enough to be able to?
We're actually.
To man a three-day, a possible three-day event?
Well, Jim does the job of five people, so we, but we, we have, we have about 22 people available, including 18 members and then three or four alternates. So we're actually bigger than we have ever been in terms of volunteers. And they come to almost every meeting or write and say why they can't. So we're really quite blessed with our volunteers. It's, it's really what makes, makes Old Home Day happen.
And I understand the fear of competing with other fairs. I mean, we've discussed this at length with, with our entire committee. And again, we thought, just in the best interest, that what happened last year wouldn't happen again. Let's just try it on a Sunday with a rain date on Monday. And like we would do every year, I would imagine, after the event is done, we would take a look at how it went and how it happened and then make adjustments going forward.
Unless it rains on Sunday and Monday.
That, that, well, if that happens, we won't do a Friday, Saturday, Sunday.
Can I say something? I'm a stickler on tradition, coming on like that. So having that at a given day for over 100 years, it makes, it makes, you know, a big deal to me. But I have no doubt, because the people that made that decision to move that to the, you know, to Sunday are the people who are the volunteers, are the people who actually run this, and are the people that are doing this for a very long time, right, Mike? So when they come and all agree on that date, this is good enough for me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I agree. The committee's a super fun, strong committee, and all the decisions are made in, with lots and, lots of information. And it's, it's not just on whim. I've never seen the, you know, the committee ever make a decision that way. So I said I have no right to question. I don't think the board really has. I mean, if the committee says it, we, I think the committee is absolutely right. I'm a little biased, but you know.
So as far as the road race, though, we don't have a definitive answer if they can do it on Sunday. So, so then, so then hypothetically, we have fireworks on Saturday, Old Home Day on Sunday, and we need another police detail for the road race with nobody else on the Common for any other events on Monday, if that doesn't come through.
We have somebody for everything here.
What's that? No, these, I mean, they're legitimate questions. And then online, it's social media stuff.
Great questions. If the, well, we don't have confirmation 100% that the adult race is running on Sunday. Like, they're doing their research right now, and we've been in contact with them, but they haven't confirmed, locked in. I think they were also waiting to see what you guys were going to decide before they, they lock in their date, because I think that, want to make sure. As far as police detail, they would need to have some detail involved for the race, for the safety of the runners and the athletes that are going to be there. But the cost of that would go into the registration fee for the runners for that day. It's not something that would come out of the budget of Old Home Day or taxpayers' money. It would go into the overhead of the race itself for the Old Home Day Race Committee that's putting that event together.
I'd like to hear, I'm a little, I'm a little surprised why they're waiting for our decision before they make theirs. But the other part of that is, one of the, one of the neatest parts of that morning is, you know, you got Dennis Tucker out there on the Lions Club, and he's, he's not just prepping sausage. He's making egg sandwiches for people and the runners and everyone else, and it's all part of the thing. But then, but then potentially, you'd have the runners on the Common by themselves and no one else would be there, except maybe their families, but there's no other event that day.
No, they, they want, they would love to do it the same, I think their intention is to do it the same day as us, but they just haven't confirmed, like, with the RaceWire company that they're going to lock them in for that date yet. But we're working with them right now. We have correspondence with the race director. I still didn't get the verbal confirmation today that, before this meeting in time, to let you know with certainty that they're going to, but that is their intention, too.
And the alumni dinner, I don't think there's.
Yes.
Oh, well, maybe there's a few other, oh, thank you. Yeah, this, this, I didn't expect this to be a five-minute conversation.
As the gentleman said, I'm going to have to read because I'm not that spontaneous. I'd be stuttering and carrying.
Go right ahead, take your time.
Judy Mascale, Charlton resident. Speaking on behalf of the Charlton High School Alumni Association and its board, of which I am president of, thank you to the board for allowing me to speak to your agenda topic, Old Home Day. It is my understanding, that's even further understood now, that the Old Home Day Committee made a decision that Old Home Day typically celebrated on the Monday of Labor Day weekend. This year would be planned for on Sunday with a rain date for Monday. I nor any member of my board were considered or consulted, consulted, when the committee discussed this change. It is concerning that the Charlton High School Alumni Dinner, for many, many years, has been scheduled for Sunday afternoon. My strong statement would be, why can't we continue to share the weekend days and programs as they have been over the years? If the Old Home Day Committee decision stands, it would be impossible for the Alumni Association to plan their dinner on Sunday, what with parking restrictions especially and always anticipated citizen participation for all the events on the Common. I would request that the board consider addressing the Old Home Day Committee's decision and favor tradition, history, and share the weekend, weekend events on days that have been part of our town community for years. As an aside, the Alumni Association has not ever, that I'm aware of, requested monies from the Old Home Day Committee or the town at large for our event. The Association has less than a stellar bankroll, and I don't know why I put that in there. It isn't even relevant. I apologize, but we don't have a bankroll. And in addition, this year will be 50 years since the class of 1973 graduated from Charlton High School, which is the last class to graduate from Charlton High School, which is the reason for celebrating and gathering over the years. And possibly, emphasis on possibly, the last year, the Association and board will be organized to continue the Sunday dinner over Labor Day weekend. Thank you.
Very well said. And thank you. And that's, it's, it's, go ahead, Jim.
First of all, I don't think it was any intention to slight any organization, especially the alumni. I know, known Judy a long time, and we have great respect for her and the people that came to this high school. None of the decisions were arrived upon to move the day. The thing that we had to consider, too, is some of the organizations that they purchase, like perishables that can't be utilized, you know, they, they buy it and, you know, a certain amount of meat and everything else, and some of that they cannot hang on to for, like, another whole year. So they'll, so that they get impacted, they don't receive any money, and it costs them money for the upstart for that, for that weekend. So one thing about, I know what Judy was saying as far as the alumni getting in, getting out. I think we can work that out. So right now, we have, and you don't know this, we were making sure that we had golf carts. So I get ahold of this guy, Jim McGovern. He runs New England Equipment down in Thompson. So we have four golf carts. They're the multi-seat golf carts. They'll be delivered to the police department on Saturday, and we'll have them for the whole weekend. If we had an offsite, we could move the alumni, you know, if there was a parking problem. So, you know, Chief Dowd's not here. I mean, there could be probably something that, if we know how many people are coming, to have some reserve parking. But if it's, if the dinner's going to be on Sunday, then yeah, there is a legitimate concern. I guess, you know, since I've been here, working for the town and been on the committee and then after retirement still, I remember when the dinner was held over at Burlingame School as opposed to here. So that was the site for many years. They used the cafeteria over there. And then eventually, it came back over here again, you know, in the school. So I don't know. I know that's one more thing to consider, another impediment, but really, the committee, you know, we, what I don't want to see happen, God forbid, is another inclement day and not have the event. Because we spend a lot of money and, and some of the stuff we contract for, we have to pay, whether it comes to fruition or not. And there's a lot of people, even the taxpayers, that pay to put on Old Home Day, and when it doesn't happen, that money has basically gone out the window and you didn't have the day. Worrying about the other events, you know, Woodstock Fair, Spencer Fair, they're going to go on anyways, you know. Spencer Fair, one of their biggest days, and I think Woodstock, too, is Labor Day. So as far as somebody from Charlton deciding to go here or there, guess what? I can't go. Because a lot of times, my wife says, "You know who's playing down in Woodstock?" It's, it's the sacrifice that you make to put on the day. Either you're committed to whatever, and I don't fault anybody that, that goes to any of the other fairs, but I don't think that that should enter into it, you know. Judy's concern is, is legit. But I think that if we could maybe get some reserve parking or work to facilitate moving the attendees with the golf carts, I think that probably, we could work that out. But it's no slight on anybody that went to this high school and that organization. Thank you.
Judy, how many people comes to that dinner, Judy? How many people, what do you think? From the perspective?
Forty to sixty, yeah.
About 60 people?
I have a question for Jim or Kathleen. Has anybody asked to use the senior center's space on Sunday? No. No, okay. We were originally trying to get the flower, the garden club over there, but they have declined, so.
If I were to guess how wild you're going to speak about tradition.
About what?
Tradition.
Yes, I am. This is breaking my heart.
I don't know if it's on the.
People see it? No?
I'm Marilyn McCasick, no cross. I can remember coming to the first one at five years old. I marched in the parade. I've only known three times that we, I have been here every year. I have flown cross-country three times to come to this. Good job. This is a tradition, as you can see. Three times was when we had the flood in 55. I was 14 then, so figure it all out.
I'll get my calculator.
Okay.
I'm going to give him what's dead, right? Yeah, yeah, all right, all right.
And then the last time, when you talked about the lightning coming in and we closed down at 3:00, I was working out on the Common with, I think, the Historical Society. And then this past Sunday, this past year, on Monday. That happens. How many years have we been doing this? This is a tradition in this town, and I hate to see it stopped. If it rains on Sunday, I don't know how they're going to do it on Monday. I have done things like this in California and Minnesota, and they, this has got to be a Charlton tradition, as far as I'm concerned. And I've talked to a lot of people about it, and they feel the same way. It's been how many years, over, almost 200 or whatever, and you want to change it because it rained on Sunday? That's wrong. It's really wrong. I want you to know that Old Home Day is in my prenup. I want you to know that Old Home Day is in my prenup. My husband cannot play golf on Old Home Day, on Sunday.
I can, I can, I haven't been able to pay my golf tour in the last twenty years.
Have you met Donald? Maybe you guys ought to hook up on that.
That's, I, I can't talk anymore because I'll cry.
No, Marilyn, you've, you've got my, I'm a little watery-eyed. It's, it's, it's part of that, we can't, you, you can't put a, a number on, a monetary number on tradition. It's very difficult to do that. It really is.
Yeah.
I understand both sides of it. It, it's a dilemma, there's no doubt. I understand it's, it's difficult to say.
It's a big deal. It rained, it rained three times in my lifetime, and I'm eighty-one.
I'm eighty.
So it's...
Does anybody know, so, I heard something about the actual origin of Old Home Day being on Labor Day. It was...
From what I understand...
Labor Day with the farmers and they...
Everybody got together on the Common, it was the end of the summer, and they just had their little time, picnicking and BSing and, and all that. And that's what it is. And I think that, as long as I can remember, that has been something that we have looked for, I have looked forward to. I mean, flying cross-country three times just to come to this, so, that's it. And I don't know what else to say, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Marilyn.
Marilyn, very well said. You make, you make a good point.
Can I just say one more thing?
Yes.
Everything that Marilyn has said, I have agreed with and felt initially, and the reason why it took us three meetings to do this as Chair, I kept putting it off, because of tradition. Because I love tradition. I love Charlton, I love Old Home Day being on Labor Day. I love it. But in, in, in some ways, we're in the trenches with the vendors and with the entertainment and everything, and Old Home Day was canceled last year. I mean, it was basically, the whole afternoon was gone, it was canceled. And, and when you see that, and you see the vendors being so upset, and you see people showing up at two o'clock saying, what happened to Old Home Day, and you're just cleaning up, and, and it, and it's, it's really awful. It, it was terrible last year. And, and so, if, if that were to happen again, for instance, next year, and it could, it'd be two years in a row we'd cancel Old Home Day. I don't know what's gonna happen to Old Home Day. And so, it was, it, it breaks my heart to change this, and I can understand how Marilyn feels and how Judy feels and everybody else, they're all my cohort. But, but when you're, you're right in there, and you're watching what happens, and you're seeing people's faces and how upset they are, and, and, and the rain was impossible, we had to cancel it. So I'm getting emotional here.
Huh? No, frogs eat rain. It wouldn't, it wouldn't those frogs eat rain.
The vendors can't make any money off the frogs.
Right, through the chair, I can tell you that personally, my, my Sons and Boy Scouts, and so they're the troop that sells all the fried dough. So they bought all their fried dough for the dough, they sell a lot of fried dough, that's their biggest fundraiser for the year. And my, what they did was they, they lost, it was a complete loss, they sent all the dough home with the parent. We had dough for days, pizza, bread, everything for, and it all just, I mean, you know, it was all just lost, it was a complete loss for them. And it wasn't even a break even, it was a loss for everything that they purchased.
And the same for the Knights of Columbus in the same...
We tried, we tried to, to do it different way, me and Patsy, we tried to bring those vendors that got hurt and, and, and give them opportunity to come and do the same different day, and it didn't work.
But it's too, it was too hard because they have other commitments, they have, you know, they, they plan, they plan for months, you know, for, to, to be there on that day. So at least they know now that they, there's a plan. If it's not one day, it's gonna be the other, they'll make sure they have enough people in line to, it's, it's, um, versus, I mean, I know that the Scouts weren't the only one, there were, there were definitely other vendors that bought all that food and had a big, and again, a, a negative for organizations that rely on this money for the entire year. So I love the tradition, I, I, I love that poster, I, 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 it like, I think it physically hurt to think, to not have it there, and I don't, and it, it just, you have to, sometimes you have to think about the practical side of it and, and not to hurt the, the, because part of the thing is the vendors. The reason why we, we sort of have it is to help support our vendors, our local not-for-profits that do so much for our town. So, you know, that's why I have to agree with the committee that...
And it would be awesome if that would be originally happening on, on Sunday, so we can move it to, to, to Monday, unfortunately, it is the other way around. So we can postpone to next week.
So, so from the time that poster was initiated, we've gone from a town-wide event of people being able to get together and frog jump and do other fun things as a community together, now we've turned into a, we're more worried about the vendor and more about the, the money part of it.
No, the, the people that are coming, the, the people that are disappointed that it didn't happen at all, the kids, we didn't even open the kids' section this year at all, all of those, that loss.
Most of the vendors are crafters, too. They're people that have spent the whole year making things, you know, candles and carvings and all kinds of stuff, and this is an opportunity for them to sell their craft.
Jim, go right ahead.
The, the events that we had planned for the children and, and the Highland Games and all that, that never, you know, that, that didn't happen. And so, there, there's, there's that loss, you know, to people that planned on, on doing that. Matter of fact, this year, the people that paid that didn't come, they're coming here and we're honoring their fee that they paid out. So our income for, for this year from vendors is gonna be way down. Unless you're a new vendor, we're honoring those that paid. So we contemplated a lot of different things. And again, you know, for the alumni, you know, I mean, we'll work with, I mean, I, I don't know, I mean, I'm trying to remember, Judy, did they, did you ever have anything other than a Sunday? Or was it always, always Sunday?
Always Sunday, Jim, I'm gonna come up to you and not interrupt, but if I heard somebody, maybe it was you, or, I don't know, maybe it was you, Jim, if we, you were asking whether or not the Alumni Association could have their dinner on Sunday, and you would work with us to keep it on Sunday, do reserve parking and be able to use the golf carts for transportation for some of our guests or whatever, and we're willing to do that.
Right.
And, and for other reasons, too, that some of these people who come to our Alumni Do-This haven't been to any of them. Every person who attended or graduated from Charlton High School is invited, as much as our mailing addresses are correct and stuff, and our addresses begin from nineteen oh eight. And we know that that person or those people, individuals are no longer with us, but we, that more recent ones who haven't come to this building in a long time or since they graduated, and come to our Alumni Do-... They want to walk around the building and see Mrs. Fisk's homeroom, see the typing room, see the FFA, FFA room. Y'all probably don't even know we had all that, but that's okay. I'm sorry?
A dungeon.
A dungeon.
Oh, yeah, it's, it's this building.
So, you know, I guess we wouldn't be denied, we would, oh, thanks, we wouldn't be denying them that opportunity if we didn't have it on Sunday.
With the Cultural Council not being here, that will open up the whole building.
Yeah, yeah.
And they'll be able to participate in Old Home Day, because if they just come to your dinner and don't stay another day, they'd be able to actually take part in the day.
They're, they're gonna have to, yeah, we're gonna have to shuttle them up and...
Yeah, and, well, it, it's gonna depend on the parking. If we can have a reserved section, I don't even care, behind the town hall, behind the town hall, what's back there for, for that day? I don't, I've never been back there.
There's nothing back there.
Or I have been, but not to...
There's nothing back there. I park there, back there and leave my car there all day, but that's, I mean, we don't, I don't have to do that, and there's other cars that do the same, but there's nothing back there. We could actually keep that hole back for the alumni.
Could it be cordoned off with police yellow tape or something, just for our people? I don't know.
You're gonna put forty cars back there, say forty, forty to sixty, I don't, forty cars gonna fit back there? I mean, then there's the shuttle available if, if they wanted to, if we reserved, you know, even farther down and then we shuttled up.
Yeah.
And I think the, you, we, there could actually be a reserved seating area for the, the members to come at Old Home Day, like a special designated area with the signs and everything to...
For the parade, you mean?
Whether it's the parade or for...
The awards ceremony.
And the awards ceremony, you can actually...
Awards ceremonies, yeah.
And have, have an official section for you guys, so if people wanted to come early.
That's a great idea.
But that, that's, that dinner typically starts at...
One o'clock.
So everything in the...
In the past few years...
So the commons closed, how do they even drive?
They park, they get shuttled up, and they, and, and we've always been, you know, text, you know, call, and someone goes and gets you, it can, it, I mean, it's always been that way.
I know I've been quiet on this, but honestly, this is a, this is a logistical issue. I mean, if it sounds like we're all willing to partner on this, to say, yes, we can make it work one way or another, I think, again, I'm, I'm sure there was no slight intended. It just honestly is politics, oversights happen left and right, trust us. But if you're willing to be amenable to compromise on that, then it, then it sounds like it's just as, just a logistical issue that can get worked out, so...
Okay.
I mean, anyway, that, I mean, that's my opinion on that one. I mean, it, it seems like that's, we don't have to work out the details tonight, it just sounds, but it just sounds like, all right, you, like, your team, your group, needs preferred parking, or preferred shuttle service, for lack of a better word. And I can't see how that's the slightest real problem on, on this one, so, anyway, that's my, that's my two cents. I mean, we still have literally, what is it, March, like six months to figure that out.
I, I think this whole discussion, and the length that it's gone on, we've gone forty-five minutes now, is, is a blessing on itself, on the town of Charlton, how we feel about our, our community and trying not to step on each other's toes.
I just hope that we have the same discussion about the budget.
No, no, school, yeah, school community, that's it, yeah. No, but seriously, it's, this is healthy conversation, and I, I'd love the interaction. I love the history, I love everything else, yeah, it's all good.
Yeah.
And there's, there's ways we can, we, we probably can work it together.
Yes.
My own, my concern is the, the one other church that we haven't heard from definitively, and he's the most, they would be the most impacted, and the road race.
So I can kind of speak to that, so it's probably because they're going through an interim pastor, so the one that has been here for a little bit since Reverend Chase passed, is not in town all the time, so he has very few office hours, and then we just brought in a new pastor, so we're kind of going through transition, so that's probably why you haven't heard anything.
Is that, is that Reverend Weaver?
Reverend?
Gary.
Gary's in town, yeah.
Correct, yeah.
Yes.
I've, I've called this personal line.
Oh, okay.
I'll, I'll swing on by and just make a point and just really try and, I'll show up.
And then, and then, the reason I'm, I'm a little shy of asking for a motion on this is that, number one, the church, and number two, the road race. Because I don't know how Monday would work if that's the only event. And, and then, I'm, I'm...
We don't know that, though. They want to have it on Sunday, that's the thing.
They want it for our decision.
The only, the only issue is that the actual timing company, the company that makes it official, hasn't said that they could do it on Sunday yet, but that, that could be just not even a real problem. It could just be a timing issue.
But then, but then why wouldn't we take a vote on it tonight if, if we don't know if that's a real problem? Because I think it's a potential problem.
It sounded like they did last year, they said, like, that's, like, it's too much for them to, like, they would not do the rain date, they're gonna follow, ever we follow, that's how it works, because last year they planned the rain, honestly, because it was, I think it's too much coordination to, like, have them have an alternate date, so they would just follow suit with whatever we choose.
And I'm also thinking about the police, the special police details for Monday, and, and Danny's not here, Dan Dow's not here, but he would say, I'll make it work, of course I'll make it work, he, he always does, but...
But they can be paid, not, you know, through either Old Home Day or the road race, they can be paid, so they won't come out of any taxpayer money.
Yeah, but then you're jacking up the price on the people that are running the race to compensate that. It's all, money comes from, nobody prints money.
So I know that we're talking about RaceWire, but they can't be the only company that's ti, timing road races. So if they weren't available, there may be another vendor.
Oh.
You know what I'm saying? That's, that's what we're talking about here, is a, is paying a vendor to time that race. So it's the one that's been used historically, at least for several years.
Yeah.
But I, I think we can work through that. I would just say respectfully, we need to know, because like, I've been working to coordinate everything for Sunday, as far as with performers and that, if I need to call them back, I may lose out. Because the Sunday, when you lock in, you know, so...
Yeah, and the vendors.
And, and, and some, and the vendors.
There's so many, you know, it's...
Lot of moving parts.
There's a lot of, a lot of ripples in the pond that go out, even, so...
I, I know like with the church, okay, one thing that I discussed with Chief Dowd was, if there was a problem with the Federated Church having, you know, concerns about parking for people attending services, what we would have to do is, we would have to, we would have to have an officer over there only allowing people for services. And they would have to park at the school, which they're gonna do anyways, and park down in Main and Field, they'd have to do other areas for alternate parking. So, but that's what we, I had talked about with Chief Dowd, I said, if that's the only impediment for the Federated Church, you know, then we would have to work on having that isolated for the period of services, that, for those hours.
And coincidentally, the church services will be over by noon, so it'll be time for the alumni to park, to park there, because they will be gone, so that would work out. So this has really turned into a typical Old Home Day meeting, with everybody...
Can I make, can I make a motion? Can I make, I'd like to make a motion to have Old Home Day on Sunday with a rain date of Monday.
Open for discussion.
Richard Peel, Family Chapel Drive in Charlton.
Yes, sir.
If you're gonna vote on this tonight, before we meet with them, we gotta make sure we can still cooperate with each other and get everything screened out. So I would think you'd hold off on the vote for a couple more weeks anyway, I don't know when they can meet.
Mr. Peel, we have, three of us are active, very active on the Old Home Day Committee, and we'll make sure that, that things are worked out with parking. We'll make sure that it's worked out.
Things are worked out with who?
With parking. We'll make sure that it's worked out.
Well, if you, if it's a guarantee, yes, but...
They're alternate members through...
Yeah, we're, we're, us three go, we'll, it'll, it'll, we'll, we'll make sure that it's worked out. You guys will have parking.
All right.
Oh, I think it can be worked out, but we need us, you know...
And if you could come to the, the, the next Old Home Day meeting, and we'll...
I just found out we're invited to it, we'll probably be there.
That'd be wonderful.
Thank you.
Do you want to wait until the twenty eighth? I won't be here, but do you want to wait until the twenty eighth?
I'd like, I'd like to...
When is our next meeting, Kathleen?
I'd like, I'd like to pause on this one, I, and I, and I said it before, too, and I, I think it's just a little, if we just had two more answers, I'd be more comfortable. We're not saying no, we're just...
Just for the record, I'm saying yes. That's either what you're asking for.
Me, too. When is the next Old Home Day meeting?
March thirtieth.
So that'll be after...
See, we already have three of us that will, will, that, that support, so if there's not an official vote, you kind of know that it's...
Yeah, but ours is, no.
Our next meeting is March twenty eighth.
Yeah. Yeah, so it's before the Old Home Day meets anyways, so now that extends it another two weeks. That's already in April, that's too, that's too long.
Kathleen, can we move on, meeting up to seven, thirty before?
Uh, sure, yeah. If you, if, if that's warranted, I don't, I'm not sure.
Do, do we think we'll have an answer from race time by then, or?
Or, or can we make a motion pending the approval of the parking? Contingent to the parking and, uh, and the, and the runners.
So I'll change the motion, um, to contingent something worked out with, um, the dinner and for the race.
I'll still second it.
Sounds fair.
That's fair.
Sounds fair.
I think that's, that's reasonable.
I think so.
And if it doesn't work, let us know, and we'll figure it out.
Yeah, and then we'll figure it out.
This has been a beautiful display of democracy in action.
No, no, and it's democracy and compassion in action, there's a lot, there's a lot, this is actually probably one of the best discussions I've had since I've been sitting up here.
Yeah.
Enjoy it.
And like Kathleen said, it didn't come easy, we've been all involved, it has been going on for weeks, so this is nothing new, and that was not an easy decision, so can we vote?
Chairman.
Just be all of you.
So, yep, so the motion is pen, um.
Subject to.
To, to, to agree with the Old Home Day's recommendations pending the outcome from the road race and from the alumni. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Unanimous.
I wanna thank you all very much, um, you are the best supporters of selectmen I have seen here ever, and you're very.
Business for feasibility studies, if you guys wanna stick around.
Oh, no, no, Kathleen, but before you really, before you thank us all.
Right.
If it rains Sunday and Monday, you're gonna be back here next, the next year.
Thank you, everyone, for coming, that shows a lot, too.
One thing, Steve, um, so one thing that we had talked about, and it's never come to fruition for parking, is so you're gonna have all this road work that's gonna go on down. There's gonna be a lot of clean fill that's going to come out of that, and I know I said to you way back that if, that, if you establish where the, um, the meat, you know, the boundaries are, um, and not having any problem with any.
Of the field, okay.
With, um, with any wetland issues or whatever, you'd be able to advance the, the back.
Yeah.
You know, um, and then be able to park more, but there are some.
That's what I was thinking about, that dirt from Amazon.
Yeah, yeah.
There, there are, I mean, there are issues, you know, that you'd have to satisfy.
Park lines and.
But, but you, if you could go deeper and have more rows, then that would help for all events here and for Old Home Day.
Yeah.
But that road work is gonna start soon, and discussions would have to be made with the contractors. Clean fill, nothing dirty, and no, no pollutants or whatever, but you might be able to gain some free fill without having to pay for it.
Yeah.
So, but you'd need to also work with the highway superintendent to have that come to fruition.
Yeah.
But when they did Route twenty over before, years and years and years ago, um, we didn't take advantage of, of that, and, uh, it'd be something that, however many spots you could gain, it would be a good thing.
Always helpful, actually, senior center, they'll buy us some time. No?
Thank you.
Thank you, chief.
Sit, chief, thank you.
All right, moving on.
Do business.
All right.
Do you just wanna make the motion right now?
All right, let me just power through it. All right, first thing for new business, application for special alcoholic life beverage license for Saint Joseph's Church, Mary Martha Guild. Attached is an application submitted by Saint Joseph's Church, Mary Martha Guild, for a special alcoholic beverage license to serve wine and malt beverages to be used on Saturday, April first, twenty twenty-three, and Saturday, November eleventh, twenty twenty-three, from five o'clock P M. to eleven o'clock P M. At Ten H Putnam Road extension for a meat raffle. The application was forwarded to the police chief, building commissioner, and fire chief, and all approved. Uh, the recommended motion is below.
I move, uh, Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the special alcoholic beverage license submitted by Saint Joseph's Church, the Mary Martha Guild, with the dates on the license to be March thirty-first, twenty twenty-three, to April second, twenty twenty-three, and November tenth, twenty twenty-three, to November twelfth, twenty twenty-three.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair says aye, unanimous.
Looks like it's a very similar one, Andrew?
Yes, for Saint Joseph's Church, Knights of Columbus, for Saturday, March eighteenth, twenty twenty-three, Ten H Putnam Road, for Saint Patrick's Day Dinner, same conditions.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the special alcoholic beverage license submitted by Saint Joseph's Council, eleven, three, seven, nine, Knights of Columbus, with the dates on the license to be March seventeenth through March nineteenth, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The last is a request for the, from the Council on Aging to declare forty chairs as surplus. Uh, the director, Sherry Russell, Director of the Council on Aging, is asking the board to declare forty chairs, and say that they would donate them, uh, many, they were donated to the C O A many years ago from the Fire Department as surplus. They no longer have room for them, I recommend the board declare them as surplus.
So, okay.
Second.
For a discussion, though, and I, we had the Old Home Day Committee here for an hour. I was hoping they'd still be here now. So these forty chairs, what are they? Are they folding chairs, are they, are they the stackable ones? Are they the stackable ones that we drag out every Old Home Day and 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 put them under the tents? Because if, if, if we declare these surplus, is Old Home Day Committee gonna go rent them? And if not, they have a place to store them. A stack of ten.
I believe that the intent of the Council on Aging was that they were wanting to declare them surplus to donate them to the, uh, Grange, but we'd have to declare them surplus and dispose of them in order to do that.
Oh, all right, we're not gonna put them on eBay.
No, no. Establish them a value of a dollar, essentially donate them to them, so they should still be within proximity.
Right.
All right.
Then, then, first and second, all, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Here we go, then. Chair says aye. Discussion of school feasibility study and possible funding.
Crowd certainly thinned out, just so we.
What's that?
Crowd certainly thinned out when it, when it comes to the bunch of talks.
Yeah.
All right, do you want to run through the memo quick?
No, I'm good. So, Mr. Chairman, basically, long story short, based upon our discussion last time around, um, at least myself, I was surprised, and it's no, it's no one's fault, I just honestly thought we could do this in, in, at Fall Town Meeting, but we have to make a decision on, one, if we're going to fund the feasibility study, and, two, how we're going to fund the feasibility study, and that needs to be determined by, by June thirtieth, so end of fiscal year.
It's the how, that's the part.
Exactly, so it's really two options are on the table. One is a debt exclusion for a one year, the other is we find within our existing funds, whether it be ARPA, free cash, et cetera, et cetera, to make that happen. I know FinCom has recommended a capital exclusion for it, um, but one way or another, we need to make a decision, hopefully tonight, on which way this board would like to go. Just let me state, far and away, I am hundred percent in support of, uh, doing the feasibility study, and even more so, I, Andrew, and again, Steve, through you, do you know what, why FinCom asked or, uh, recommended a debt exclusion?
So, the, the catalyst essentially around it was that, at the end of the day, this project is going to be a hundred-plus million-dollar, um, project that's going to require a, a debt exclusion vote, more, more likely than not. So to ask, essentially, for a very mild ask to start with, essentially gives it a litmus test of, yes, this project actually could pass a ballot vote, if it can't, you're gonna spend all the time and money and effort doing that, just to lead to a, essentially, we don't need a new school vote, at least you're flushing that out early.
Thanks, Andrew. So, so for the rest of the board, my, I continue to have an almost vitriol hatred of debt exclusions and overrides unless it's for a incredibly good reason, and I think a good reason potentially, if this passed, would be for the Shepherd Hill renovation and or, oh, I shouldn't say and or, but rather or new build. Uh, my preference on this is using our reserve funding sources, I don't want to raise taxes above two and a half for any reason this year, especially on a vote that, quite honestly, if it gets voted down at town meeting, um, you know, it's, it's not gonna happen anyway, um, you know, et, et, et cetera. So, again, that's me, I'm all in favor of doing this, but I would like to use three hundred thousand from, uh, free cash and two hundred thirty-seven thousand. Or, or, you know, it's said another way, I'd like to wipe out the rest of our, uh, ARPA funds, and then use the delta from, from free cash, but that's just my opinion, I figured we just, because this was my request, so I figured it was only fair to kinda kick it off on where I'm heading with that.
And, and to refresh my memory and, and for the people at home, so this is a million-dollar plus ask from the district for the feasibility study.
Yes, and some of it is reimbursable eventually.
It, it's reimbursable eventually, if the state actually approves the, the fifty-two percent, fifty percent funding of the school renovation.
I'm not sure what the exact number is, but some portion of this would come back to us, uh, assuming things were approved.
Right, so we share with that.
But if, but if we get down, if we get down into a list of five schools and we're told no, do we get that money back? That's the question.
That I don't know. I know historically, once you get through feasibility and you get up to that point and, and they're happy with you, it's, assuming the towns agree to fund the, the final project, it's the exception and not the rule that you, that you're not asked to move forward. That's why they, that's why we were turned down for so many years, because all these other places were like, yeah, I'm, I'm ready to go. So we've been trying to do this for fourteen years, you know, this is the first, this, this is the first time that we've been accepted. Now, town meeting voters could vote this down, and I really wanna emphasize for those at home, that this is gonna be your vote at town meeting. It's, there is, there are no shenanigans, it, it's a straight up and down vote, if you wanna fund it and go forward with the feasibility study, you can, if you'd rather keep the six hundred thousand, or five hundred thirty-seven thousand, give or take, and you don't want to, you can do that, too, and then we get, for all intents and purposes, with a couple asterisks, we get kicked out of the program. But this is a one-hundred percent town meeting vote, which is another reason why I like it, as opposed to a debt exclusion where it's like, well, town meeting said yes, or, and, and then people came out to vote and said no, and, you know, et, et, et cetera. Um, because, not to bring up horror stories from the past, but we, this board and prior iterations have had multiple discussions around when we should be asking for debt exclusions on presidential elections, state elections, municipal elections, et cetera, and it seems that it's, it's always been all over the place. I, I think we should just have this as a straight up and down town meeting vote, and people can, can vote it up, really up or down, but again, that's just me.
So that's pushing, so, so it's sort of our way to entice people to kind of, once they vote, it happens, versus my worry is how that competes with the fire station, that's my biggest, that's my biggest worry there, to be honest.
Which is actually gonna be our next conversation.
But I know it ties in, but that's my, I, um, I just don't wanna make a decision that kills either, we, we need both, I just don't. I don't know what the best approach is to be able to do that and not have that.
Let me ask this, is there general agreement from the four of us that we should proceed with the study?
Yes.
I think so, yeah.
You good?
We had these on that, to the people.
Yeah, but, but, but I'm a little caught up on, we probably ought to have the second discussion before we take a vote on the first one, as to how we fund it.
I'm sorry.
Does the second option require a town?
I, I, I'll be thinking about the, the fire substation feasibility study as a debt exclusion?
No.
We're gonna do both, out of vapor, and how do we know that?
We don't, do we don't have to, are we funding the substation study also at this meeting?
Yes.
That is the next, the next budgetary, and not to jump ahead.
That's right, that's, that's why.
We can, we can, we can talk about them together, right?
Sure, sure. So, of course, just talking about the other one, so fifty thousand, this board's already approved through the, through the ARPA funding to conduct, to essentially conduct the study, went out, got proposals, essentially got no, no response the first time, assuming that, hey, our, our scope is probably outside of what our budget is, so, went back, redrafted the scope, went out, um, got interested parties, negotiated with the best, uh, firm, essentially, they came back and said, to do everything that you're asking for, it's gonna be a hundred and seventy-one thousand, where we had fifty. So, um, we asked what can be done for fifty, and what can, what can be done outside of that, so we could at least get the process going while we try to ident- identify the additional funding source and potentially make the, uh, project stronger in that, in that timeframe as to how we could do it. So, you know, essentially, what it would be, or what's being recommended is that we do the fifty thousand dollars worth of work under the ARPA money that's already been approved in preparation for the spring town meeting, so whatever, so the remaining balance of the six hundred thousand in free cash, essentially, a very light presentation at town meeting as to what we're doing, why we're thinking of doing it, and it's, and request the town meeting transfer free cash funding to complete the feasibility study. The process being that that would allow that committee to do the work over the summer and have a very firm fix, firm fix, but essentially a good idea of a price as to what it would be to build that building to take to, um, a potential November ballot vote if necessary in a fall town meeting.
So between ARPA and free cash, we have eight hundred thirty-nine thousand, six hundred eighty-seven dollars. If we fu, if we fully fund both feasibility studies using ARPA and that free cash, uh, there'll, there'll be six hundred sixty, six hundred sixty thousand, so there'll still be a delta of around a hundred seventy, a hundred eighty thousand poking around in free cash. So those are the two options, basically, uh, I wouldn't recommend a debt exclusion on either. I think it's, in my opinion, it's ripe for problems.
If we have, if we have the both, then, um.
Yeah, I can go.
And, and the idea with the Fire Department feasibility study and that is at least that being a witness tense to the town of saying, yep, this is, this is a project that we support.
Right, good.
So.
So, so the motion, no, uh, well, so, so the motion is.
So, so I'll take these one at a time, just to make sure we're on the same page.
And then we understand, but you, we had to understand both before.
I'll make a motion to place on the town meeting warrant, um, an article that fully funds the Shepherd Hill slash MSBA feasibility study, from a combination of free cash and the rest of the ARPA money.
I second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous.
And then the second one would be around the fire substation feasibility study, that I'll make a motion to fund the hundred thirty thousand extra, uh, via, via free cash, again, putting it on, putting it on as a town meeting, as a separate town meeting article.
I second.
Very good, all in favor?
Aye.
So, Mr. Chairman, just one more quick thing, especially for those at home, or if Jason Blows are watching this. Again, this just now provides the opportunity for town meeting voters to decide our future. I mean, do you want a new, do you wanna proceed within the feasibility study for the high school, and do you want to proceed for a new substation to replace current station two? Um, so really, show up May fifteenth, let us know, and that's how we would proceed.
So we still haven't taken a vote on, we're, we're motion, we're motioning a second.
We did.
No, I think we did.
Not, not on the second one?
Oh, yeah, we knew it, aye.
I second.
All in favor?
You wanna do it again, try to do it again, though.
Yeah, motion to, to fully fund the fire substation feasibility study via free cash.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No, I actually, well, I think you're cutting out, we'll, we'll yell at each other later.
Oh, it's all, it's all good.
Annual town meeting warrant request.
Thanks, chief.
So attached is the draft of the F Y twenty-four annual town meeting warrant request. Uh, you're scheduled to close the town meeting warrant tonight, uh, those are the list of articles for consideration. Uh, we'll get you actual language, but this is just a draft of what has been submitted for requests or articles so far.
Steve, through you, so, Andrew, I'm assuming we just voted on, would be taken care of under Article nine?
That is affirmative, yes.
All right. Is there any interest in the board from moving that up in front? So here's what I'm thinking, and I'm just being completely candid, I don't know what's gonna happen at town meeting, uh, around budgets, especially with D C R S D, and I wanna make sure that we order these correctly so that we have good discussions up front, so it doesn't turn into, you know, people waiting around and doing whatever, so, you know, Andrew, would it make sense to move Article nine in front of Article six?
I think that would be just fine, um, pairing it with interdepartmental transfers.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking, too.
Yeah.
So to the.
Where did you say, which, which?
Yeah, so, so to the board, I suppose what I'm getting at is that, knowing we just said that, that we're gonna allocate around six hundred sixty thousand, roughly, um, in, in potential capital funding, which could be used for other things, I'm being honest when, when I say that. I'd actually like that to happen before the town budget, more specifically before we have discussions or.
Open up the budget.
Yes, because, I, because that could very well happen, depending upon our discussions with, with the school committee, someone. with, with, with the school committee, someone on town meeting floor could very simply say, look, Board of Selectment Finance Committee is recommending X, I'm now going, but that person could recommend, I'm making an amendment to do it to Y, and I'm going to use X, Y, X, Y, or Z money to make that happen. So I'd rather have the capital come before the town budget to give people yet another option.
So you're talking to, to moving it to the sixth?
To, uh.
Just kind of move it.
Two, two before six, so, Andrew, I'm thinking like it would go 5, 9, 6?
Yes.
And again, that's just up for discussion.
That's, that's smart, it makes sense, it absolutely does, before everybody starts to open up the budget.
Yeah.
For those particular items.
And then, then everyone knows what other funds that we could be playing with, too. But anyway, so my motion would be, or for discussion, I want to think about it, that under existing ordering, it would go Article 5, inter intra departmental transfers for FY23, capital items and related contracts, and then the town budget.
I second that motion, I think that's good.
Cool.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks for that.
Unanimous.
Andrew, do you know when we're actually going to have the languages, the, the language on this?
I should have by next meeting, it's, it's all in draft form right now.
I just want to get them out on, on, on the website as soon as possible, so people can look at them.
Yeah, there's a couple.
So we voted to move it, but do we, do we have to vote to close it?
Yes.
Yes.
But we can open it and change.
Um, yes, Selectmen are the only ones who can, I generally don't like to do that, because I think we did that last year a little bit, and I prefer not to. So, I don't think that we're going to get anything new at this point, so I'll actually make a motion to, to close.
I have a question on a couple of them, but I'm, but I'm trying to find them.
Well, just because we close it doesn't necessarily mean, it, it basically means that.
Can I have the, the language for next?
Andrew, like, correct me, if we close it, it just means nothing new can be added?
Correct.
Yeah.
Yes.
Something can be pulled.
Anything can be pulled from this list, at, at really any time, it's just more or less you have to take the action to open it up, if there's something material new that comes in that, you know, wisdom is there for this.
Can we, should we, well, I guess we just wait, because I, I did have a question over the, if we want to talk about it tonight, over Article 13, the conservation fund?
Is that one of our standard articles?
Uh, no, that's, it's a new, it's a request to establish a new fund, which may be better to invite the proponents for that discussion. I, I don't have any information right now to have a, to, to moderate a.
Bring them in on the 28th?
I've heard a little bit about it.
Oh, I, honestly, I thought this was like a standard one, so I, no.
No, it's not, it sounds from.
Honestly, I'd, I'd recommend the board bring them in on, on the 28th.
Yeah. I think that, I think that one's an important one.
So do we want to close tonight, so that people won't bring in new ones, or are we good closing it?
I think we're good closing it.
Because if so, I'll make a motion to close the warrant.
Yeah, then we discuss on the 28th, with them here in the room.
Okay, very good. With that, with, with that on the, yeah.
Yeah.
Good.
Oh, Steve, we need to vote, I'm sorry.
All in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
See, that's why I, I, I don't use paper, it's, it's much easier with the computer.
No, I know, I, I kept, I told Andrew last night, I'm like, you know what, I think I'm going to go that way.
It's much, it's much easier.
And I'm like, I'm afraid I'm going to get lost.
I keep all the little packets stacked up on my.
You know why I'm afraid of that? When you start talking, I'm going to go, whatever. I don't know if I can flip my fingers, I feel, you're going to, you're going to throw me off.
That's why we don't say 21 anymore.
I know. Committee reports. I don't think we have any Selectmen Committee reports, do we? DOS policy review, I don't think we have any of that.
Yes, I'm sorry, Steve, we didn't have any policies to, I mean, I noticed.
Oh, I'm sorry, we left it off for this one because of the length of the agenda.
Good man.
Yep.
All right. And now the most important discussion of the evening, student select personal report. Later on, Harry.
March 15th, 2023. The Shepherd Hill Show Choir participated in the 2023 Andover New England Show Choir Showdown this past Friday and Saturday, and while they did not win, they represented our school well and ought to be proud of themselves for their hard work. Shepherd Hill sophomores will be taking the English MCAS on March 28th and 29th, we wish them the best of luck in this endeavor. Those signed up to participate in spring sports in the following months attended a mandatory informational open house this Monday, March 13th, we look forward to seeing how our teams play out during the final season of the school year. Student Council is hosting a dodgeball tournament on Thursday, March 16th at 6:00 PM, teams must consist of seven people and the cost is $3 per person. Triumph and the National Honor Society are holding a musical bingo night on Thursday, March 23rd at 6:00 PM, half of the proceeds will go to the winner, which could be up to $150, and the other half go to music charities. And the next fundraiser for the class of 2024 is my own plays. All profits go directly to the class fund, I do not benefit financially from this. Clay, a fictionalized account of the career of three-time failed presidential candidate Henry Clay, can be bought for $10. Tim for Mayor, a humorous spoof of modern politics, can also be bought for $10. And the Harry Cannon Fun Pack, which includes both plays, can be bought for $15. These will be available until Friday, March 24th, and I have the order form zombie right now.
Could, could you repeat that a little slower? The last three, no, I'm teasing, I hear, I got, I got. Again, for the people at home, he does not benefit financially from any of these transactions.
That would be, because next time, it closes the 24th.
I'll talk to you after.
And you have to take the ethics class right now.
He must have been, all right.
I don't trust mobile banking.
I took it for standing place, but she took it.
All right, all right, don't worry, I'll work something.
He's okay with COG.
We'll make sure you get yours.
It's a same.
Other business, oh, Town Minister.
Uh, just a reminder for the, that the board is invited to the Government Study Committee meeting on March 21st at 6:00, right here, to discuss the future of DPW and potential structures as to what the, the government study has looked at, and what the Board of Select may want to see going forward, so that way we can have a plan as we try to fill the DPW director position. So hopefully, anybody interested in that is able to attend.
Sorry, Andrew, Steve, through you, I'd be completely honest, it's Mrs. Borowski's birthday on the 21st, so I definitely won't be there, but I can provide some, like, just notes to, like, to Andrew, and that's also a nice way of saying, if you see my wife around next Tuesday, wish her happy birthday. Sorry.
All right. We received a notification from the Governor's Office that Charleston's Chapter 90 apportionment from FY24 will be 619,550. It's generally aligned with what we've seen every year, because the Governor's bond bill has consistently been $200 million for the last 20 years. Municipal Digital Equity Planning Program, so in recognition of available funding and technology advancements from the federal level, we had, we submitted an expression of interest to participate in the Municipal Digital Equity Planning Program through the Mass Broadband Institute. And as part of the Digital Equity Sharet Program, consultants organize and facilitate intensive workshop engaging municipal officials, community groups, and other stakeholders to gather information on the needs of residents and the digital equity issues facing the municipality. We have been accepted into this program and will be working with CMRPC through the process. I don't know if anybody here went through the Municipal Vulnerability Program process, but it's very similar to that. We'll be looking for members of the community to serve on a steering committee potentially for this program, so more information to come, but just getting that information out there now. And as we've officially entered peak budget season, I filed a letter with our legislators outlining the town's capital priorities and highlights to, in the state budget, which are most impactful to Charleston. In this year's letter, I made sure I highlighted the formula struggles that we've seen with the distribution of Chapter 70 funds and the impact that it's had on our school assessment. We're hoping that our legislative partners take our position into consideration as the opportunities arise in the budgetary process. And just wanted to throw a quick shout out to DPW, you know, and all the subcontractors that worked over the last day, very tricky, we weren't sure if we were getting two inches or two feet, but, you know, very dynamic situation, they all did a great job, considering circumstances.
Well done.
Very good. And other business, I don't have time on posting, we're looking for two Board of Selectmen members to.
I did the last one, so I nominated it. That's what happens when you don't show.
I actually did the last one, too.
Yeah, that's right, you did, yeah.
The fireman, the fire contract? Because David, we can do it.
Oh, you too? Go ahead. Nope, what, motion?
See, David, you owe me if you're watching this.
Do I have a second?
I second.
Can you second for yourself?
Absolutely.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. This is I. You have the license. And next meeting announcement, the Board of Selectmen's special meeting with the Government Study Committee on March 21st. I think, Bill, you already mentioned that date as Cindy's.
Very important day.
Yeah.
I'm just trying to suck up at this point, I'm like, lady.
Yeah, you're on television.
I was going to say, I was just watching.
We can sing happy birthday from the, from the meeting.
And I will add, we don't have an official date, but waiting for a few dates to be proposed from the school committee to have a budgetary workshop, just to talk about our positions of both boards and trying to come to some sort of resolution.
Do we have a deadline on that? And what I mean by that is, is there a point of no return for printing the budget and all, and everything else? I know we can make changes while we're there and recommendations, but I would really prefer when, when it goes out, that barring one, one of us changing our minds, I mean, and making motions, or I should say, rather, the board changing its entire mind, I'd rather have the town understand, okay, here's what's being proposed, and show up and vote however you want.
I would say, in our reality, it's probably April 26th, which would be the date of Dudley's exclusion.
Oh, I see what you're saying, yeah, right, right.
So if that ends up failing, this.
When is the, when is the town meeting?
Ours is May 15th.
No, no.
Dudley's is after, however, they're.
They're override.
They're conducting an override vote on April 26th. So any negotiations that may occur as far as a moderated number between where they are and up, maybe just thrown out the window if they don't pass.
Right.
So it's like a special election, where people will come and vote for that?
Majority.
Oh, yeah.
It's literally just for the holistic override over there.
People who really want it or don't want it.
Yeah, correct, exactly.
Which includes, it's 4.8 million.
Something like that. But it's with school and municipal.
Which includes, it's 1.2 million for the schools and 1.6 or some change. Yep.
For the government.
For their own operations.